I know. I was holding off till I had something fun to say. You guys ready? All right, 6:30. Let's call the January 5th, 2023 P&amp;Z Commission to Order. I will start by doing roll call. Brooks?
Here.
Chuck?
President.
Brian?
President.
Thomas?
President.
Alyssa?
Here.
Rob? That is a full quorum. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number four, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
They'll move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, the approval of minutes of the December 1st, 2022 regular meeting.
I would approve with one, I would move to approve with one, one addition. I would move to approve with one addition in the Airbnb paragraph down toward the bottom, where it says Barb Fish was present for discussion. In the spirit of full disclosure, I would ask you to put that she is also a city councillor. Otherwise, move to approve.
Move to approve that change in a second? Brooks? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so now. None of them? Nobody? All right. Moving on. Item number seven, general business district dwelling units. This is on page 14 of our packet. Okay. Um, Patrick, help me out.
So, we talked about this last time. There was a particular building in town that recently has become for sale. Someone, a realtor had come to us asking about possibly using that as a dwelling component. I've heard from several different realtors lately about the same property. Some, the most recent one today talked about the potential of using that space as a Verbo or Airbnb. So then we're back to that conversation potentially. How do we regulate that? Is it, since it's in the commercial district, is it akin to a hotel? Then if it's not normally a dwelling, if it's just standalone Verbo, how do we do that? So, I was under the impression some realtors would be here to talk about that, but I am not sure if we have anyone in the audience for this particular subject. So, the draft in the packet is the language as discussed about a month ago. Correct.
Well, I mean.
But it would apply to?
I mean, maybe.
Full disclosure, that's what's starting off.
Sort of. So, Patrick, I guess my question would be, we allow for, we do allow for hotels in our general business, correct?
Correct.
And this is general business?
Correct.
And a VRBO is basically a hotel?
Correct. The key thing distinguishing a hotel from that would be, it's, it's, if we want to make a distinction, I have a whole flow chart that I created. What distinguishes a Verbo and Airbnb from a hotel? A hotel specifies wholly or in part for the accommodation of automobile transients. Then when does someone become a transient versus a short-term renter? Then, you know, is that based on principal residence? Then you don't really want to get in the business of all that. So, they would probably be subject, if the state has regulations regarding hotels, and there are Verbo regulations, so, when, if we had the requirement that it be owner-occupied, when does it become their, using that space as a Verbo? Is it just Paul's regulation if it's not necessarily that case? So, it's, how would we want to treat the potential use of that space? There, the space does allow for more than one principal use in a commercial district, so they could potentially have a Verbo slash hotel plus whatever they want to use the rest of the building for on the same lot?
Hmm.
To me, there's a lot of difference between, sorry.
Thank you.
To me, there's a lot of difference between a Verbo and a hotel.
I think.
Hotel, you typically have management on, onsite.
Yes.
All the time. It's a lot.
Yep.
It's a different animal.
It is. I don't think it was created. I, I think when it was first created, Verbos and Airbnbs were supposed to be this, I have a spare room, come rent it, it's cheaper than a hotel, it's whatever. What they have turned into is we're going to build a house just to rent it.
Right.
And it's all over the place. And I mean, and it's not as big in Brandon, South Dakota. We're not exactly a hotspot for tourism, but in the hills, they're basically all over the place. I mean, houses that were built for no other reason than to rent. And those are in residential neighborhoods, and those aren't in what's already zoned a general business. I don't know.
Would we potentially then want to look at the definition of hotel? Currently, it reads, "Any building or group of buildings containing guest rooms or dwelling units, some or all of which have a separate entrance leading directly from the outside of the building with garage or parking space conveniently located on the lot and designed, used, or intended wholly or in part for the accommodation of automobile transients." There isn't a specification in there, what, specifically about management being onsite. Is that something we would want to look at?
No. I feel like you're swearing at me every time you say transient.
Yeah, I think my recollection of our discussion before was that we sort of decided not to go into Airbnb, VRBO as a separate thing at, at this time at least. And so.
I agree.
I understand this is not tapping that head on. It's something else that maybe could, it maybe could allow a slice of that in a, the right property, but, um, I agree with that. I, so I don't think I'd be interested in changing the, in looking at the hotel definition either to try to slide that in. So, yeah, I agree. Um, I'm, I'm a little hesitant about, you know, allowing residential in the, um, general business. Um, but I am, you know, I'm willing to make an exception for owner-occupied dwelling. I think, um, throwing a, um, Airbnb or whatever, all Verbo or whatever, um, into it, I, I don't want to go there, so.
Well, but here's the thing. This would basically qualify under the definition of a hotel. It has all the, all the things that he just read off as a definition of a hotel.
Conceptually, yes. That's kind of where the, how would you want us to, say they do submit an application as a hotel use. I imagine there are building code specifics for a hotel, even if, if this is a one-room hotel. But how, given that definition of hotel, how would you prefer we approach their application if it gets submitted?
So, is a hotel required, does there, is there need to be a conditional use to have a hotel in a general business, or it's an allowed use in a?
It is a permitted use.
My question is about the parking. Would there be enough parking there if the entire building was turned into sleeping rooms?
What do we require for hotel parking? Are you looking that up?
Yep.
Sorry.
Hotels and motels, one space for each two rental rooms. So, we would round up, so if it has one room, they would need one spot.
So, looking, I just Googled online, definition of a hotel was pretty much what we have. Uh, definition of a hotel is pretty much what we have in our regs. I just Googled, Airbnb is a residential property that hosts rent on a short-term basis to travelers. So, that's the difference.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't know if Airbnb and VRBO on their, on their website gives one crap about what zoning district their properties are being rented in. Right? Like, I don't, I don't know if there's a, there's a specific definition when it comes to those websites.
So, the term Airbnb and Verbo were generally designed for residences used as that.
Right.
If they try to effectively do that same thing, but call it a hotel, is where the conversation is.
Well, but we don't allow for residences in general business.
Right. Correct, but this would be.
But we allow for, we allow for short-term rentals in general business in the form of a hotel, because we don't tell people that they can't rent a hotel room for a week or a month. We don't say you can only rent this hotel room for one day, right? I mean, you could rent a hotel room for a year if you wanted to.
And some people, depending on their circumstances, live in a hotel full-time, so.
Yeah, we don't differentiate on that front.
They, it's the situation where they might come file an application as a hotel, but advertise it on Verbo or Airbnb, or hotels.com potentially, or any of the other sites. So, I just, if we receive such an application, I'm just wondering how we should.
I don't know.
There's always somebody trying to sneak away in.
Well, I mean, yes, but if people weren't staying in them, nobody would want to do it.
Um, I'm still concerned about the parking. When that building was originally built, a family lived there, so I don't know how many bedrooms they had in the living quarters, two, three maybe. And then the rest of the building was for commercial use. Um, since then, it's been used for, the building's been used for other uses, but the portion that was the living quarters maybe is still set up that way. But if they put sleeping rooms in the part that was a business, you could have quite a few sleeping rooms, I'm thinking. I don't know how many parking places are on that property right now.
I think it's like, nah.
Way more than would be required.
Okay, well, that answers my question then.
Way more than would be required.
I think if, um, an apartment or a unit to be rented in the general business district is not designated as a hotel, it should be treated as one for the purpose of your applications. Uh, all the other ones that we're talking about, and I've rented them before, are in residences areas.
I mean, if, if somebody wants to buy it and operate it as a two-unit hotel, fine. But that's the only use they could use it as. They couldn't use it as their own dwelling. They couldn't ever live there.
Um, well, that's true as well. So, we don't allow people to move in full-time in a general business. So, if they did only want to use it as a, maybe they wanted to use half of it as an Airbnb and the other half is what it was originally, which is a photograph studio, photography studio, they could do whatever they wanted to, and the other side is general business, as long as they met parking requirements. I don't know, since it's a general business and since they're operating it as basically our definition of a hotel, how we could tell them that they can't operate something there. Like, it doesn't act any differently than any other short-term rental hotel. And we actually just say in our ordinance that you can't live in it. And really, is, if they're going to use it, I mean, we can't, we can't decide that, how they market a property for rental. I mean, it's no different than if you went out and applied to be a Holiday and Express franchise or whatever. Um, they're not going to get one of those franchises for a one-bedroom apartment, but that's why they use VRBO or Airbnb. It's basically their booking agent.
So, that circles us back to the draft in here. We talked about allowing as a conditional use, owner-occupied dwelling first floor being, conceptually then, say that is a hotel. They could apply for a conditional use permit to have an owner-occupied dwelling in that hotel, could they?
Well, that would be completely different.
But the part that they live in can only be 25% of the overall footprint.
Correct.
So, they wouldn't have a very big dwelling unit if that's not a very big facility.
Yep. I'm just trying to think of, I know there probably are hotels where it's, it's usually not your Holiday and Express, it's usually probably a mom-and-pop type hotel that they live there as well. So, okay. Sounds good. If we should hear from them, we will. I imagine there are building code requirements. They would have to improve that building for hotel purposes. Probably firewalls and such, I'm guessing.
So, the, the building in question, does it actually, it has a garage, right, with parking stalls inside of it?
Yes, sir. That is two-stone. Yes.
So, would this ordinance we're being asked tonight to recommend it?
I don't, I don't, so, the, the, at least the question at hand has nothing to do, I don't think, with the ordinance that we're looking at.
Right, correct. They're the same topic generally, but two different points.
Now, if we want to allow somebody to live in a general business, then that's what this says.
Correct.
Which is a completely different conversation.
Correct.
Um, that is somebody, like, well, that's what this, the building in question was originally built, and it was before we were on P&amp;Z, any of us, but they were allowed to live in a portion of it and run a photography studio out of the other portion of it.
Yeah, this draft, I don't, I think I'm in favor of, just because it's a conditional use, it's general business, and it's a limited amount of the space, so.
Yeah, and those numbers match up with light and dust from heaven and dust from when you have owner-occupied in those other districts.
So, are we passing this tonight, or are we recommending approval?
This is just a draft.
Okay. So, we could schedule a public hearing for the next P&amp;Z meeting? No?
You could.
I mean, we don't want to change the draft at all.
Thomas did have a point that in NB, the owner-occupied first-floor dwelling was 50% or 1,500 square feet. Did we want to keep, where did we want to set that if GB is set at 1,300 and 25%?
I think they should look the same.
Which window would you want to move up or down?
I would say 1,300 square feet. What, did you say 2,000 square feet in NB?
Can you repeat that again?
Yep. So, currently, the draft of the NB district on page 18 of the packet has owner-occupied dwelling unit first story ground floor at being, dwelling unit shall occupy the lesser of 1,500 square feet or 50% of the building's footprint. The current draft of the owner-occupied dwelling unit first floor in the GB district we're talking about now is conditional use lesser of 1,300 square feet or 25% of the building footprint.
What do you guys want?
I like the 25% in the, in the general.
I agree.
25 and 13?
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up is I want them to both look the same.
Yep.
So, modify NB accordingly.
Where do we come up with 13? No, it's an unlucky number, right? It could be 14.
I, I do not remember. I think it, we took it directly from how we modified LI and HI, but I have no idea how we came up with 13.
All right.
So, all right.
Okay. Item.
So, as long as, I mean, we're, we're talking the 13 versus the 15, but what about the 25 versus the 50? Are we still okay with the 25, 50 between GB and NB?
The lesser, I, I.
One thing about, uh, neighborhood business is we want it to have more of a neighborhood feel, and so if somebody is owner-occupied business, I can see where it might be a good idea to have them up to 50%. Whereas in general, commercial or gen, general business, we want that to look like businesses. We don't want, so I, that could be 25. I mean, I think those numbers are okay.
I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with that in case somebody comes to us and questions it before we.
Well, we would.
Recommend it to.
So, we would want them both to look the same. So, are you saying you would rather have them both at 50% or you want them both at 25%?
No, I think it's okay to have one.
I think it's okay to have neighborhood business at 25% and commercial or general business at 50. I mean, I think that's okay.
Other way around.
It's the other way around.
It's the other way around?
Yeah, it's way listed.
Yeah.
What now?
Page 14, or, yeah, page 14, general business talks about 25%. Page 18, neighborhood business, and the draft talks about 1,500 square feet or 50%.
I thought that's what I said.
No, you said the opposite.
I said it the other way around?
Yep.
I'm sorry. But the way it's written here is, yeah.
One, one thing to think about, we're like, we're thinking of allowing 10,000-square-foot buildings in neighborhood business. That would allow for 5, 5,000 square foot of dwelling unit.
It's the lesser of the square footage or the percentage. So, they would be maxed out at 13.
It would be 1,500.
So, the percentage, why it really is kind of inconsequential.
So, the, I'm sorry, so the what is?
The percentage.
Percentage?
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, well.
The percentage probably applies more in this case, general business.
Yes.
Probably. I, I like the 25% for this.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion, do we? We gave you direction?
We're just discussing tonight.
Yep. Unless you wanted to set that for a public hearing at a future meeting, or we can bring back a, a draft to discuss.
No, I think we're good with drafts. I think we're, I think we got it.
Okay.
You, no, I think as long as you do that, we, we're ready for a public hearing.
We will set the public hearing.
There you go. Sweet. All right, item number eight, neighborhood business district ordinance draft. Number eight, speaking of whether or not, oh geez, I'm hitting the wrong button. Hold on. That was too big. Um, anybody want to start with the neighborhood business district? We have talked and talked and talked about this. Do you have anything, Patrick, or would you like some responses from us? Go ahead, Chuck.
I'm, I mean, we've spent months on this.
We have.
I'm fine with the way this looks. I think we tried to compromise where we were able to, so I'm, I'm good with this. My, and on ordinance is, if I have the straight, we're just recommending, we're a recommending body, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, my question for Tim and Barb would be, we can recommend this, but is it going to fall on deaf ears with the council and get kicked back? And if it gets kicked back, what's the point?
That's a great question.
Either of you have any inklings?
I, I mean, it does seem as though, yes, the planning and zoning does a lot of work on these. Yes. And do we sometimes have a council that doesn't listen to committee recommendations? 100%, yes.
Uh, Barb Fish, 1401 South Parkview Place, I'm also on city council. Um, good question, Chuck. As you're all aware, Tim and I have been strong advocates of planning and zoning and supporting your decisions or recommendations, I guess I should say, because you're the one that's done all the research. And unfortunately, um, the other council members choose not to attend these meetings. So, they're kind of, you know, they're, they're blindsided if the public comes in. Um, that can become a contentious situation. So, I, I can't speak for Tim, but I can speak for myself, saying that I would certainly recommend that they follow your recommendations. We, we haven't been too successful recently. Usually we are, but recently we have not.
But Barb, I would say that applies to part committee, that applies to the water conservation committee, that applies to any time we've had any committee that we've put to work for the city. It would be sensible anyway to listen to the work that they have done, but it's not necessary, I guess.
And so, I think the only thing we can do is if you put forth this recommendation, I, I think a lot would go, it would go a long ways if you personally, as P&amp;Z members, would talk to some of the council members. I know it's another step. It's not really, you know, what you should have to do, but I, I think it could carry a lot of weight, um, knowing that you feel pretty strongly about it, and, and you've done your research. How many, like you said, how many meetings have you been working on this? So, that's about all I can tell you. I don't know what Tim has to say.
Same. I mean. Anybody else have any comments?
I got one more comment. I just appreciate the people in the audience that have been coming and giving us your comments. What I would appreciate you doing to your neighbors is telling them factually that none of us are getting paid from Lee.
Wow.
Because that's been said, and it's been put out on social media. So, I'd really appreciate you telling your neighbors that's not the case. It's just false. Thank you.
So, one thing to point out between the, the last draft and this draft, there are changes noted on page 27 of the packet, being Taylor Shop has been added as a permitted use. We talked about that. One question still open, I think I know your answer, but I just want to get a, a statement on it, is do we want to treat the neighborhood business in terms of the amount of uses per lot, principal uses per lot, like the residential's, or would you like to treat them as the other commercials and industrial being one or one-plus? It sounds like you want to treat them as one or more, but I just wanted to get a, a statement on that, since that hasn't been clear. And how did we want to deal with on and off sell alcohol? And a question has come up regarding parking lot design, and that is on the agenda as item 10 as well. But those are kind of the items I had for discussion.
Okay.
I guess to me, the, the cooperative parking is bigger than just NB. I think that's, that's a whole separate topic, whether that's an NB area, whether that's a GB area, you know.
Well, that goes hand in hand with the shared parking thing that we passed a while back.
Yeah, so that's, that's, to me, that's a separate issue outside of, of the NB zone.
Okay.
Um, I myself, I, I would, I would like to see, or I have no problem with multiple uses as long as they're permitted on, on the property.
I would agree.
Okay. Lee?
Lee's Gelling 204 Elm Circle. I'm going to give you a handout that Patrick and I have been working on in regards to some of the setbacks and green space, and I just want to clarify, um, how that would work. So, I'm going to hand this out, and then we'll come back. So, what I'm handing out in the green is the green setbacks. In blue is the EMP, which is the water detention pond. And then.
So, on his drawing, the blue is this area here, the, the hash marked area towards the bottom.
So, I just wanted to clarify that on the setbacks, obviously in general business, we can park in the front yard setback. In the NB district, which would be the area where it's surrounded by redwood and past flower, we cannot park in the setback, okay? Um, there is some clarification that Patrick and I are trying to work through on the division of lot one, two, and three there. Um, there's some clarification, do you intend to have green space there as well? You see what I'm saying?
Between the lots? Green space between the lots you're talking about?
Yeah. So, it would look like this.
Yeah. You treating this as three lots or one lot?
I agree.
So, currently, the landscaping standards of the zone. So currently, the landscaping standards of the zoning ordinance, section E1 requires a landscaping strip with a minimum width of five feet shall be located between the parking lot and adjoining lot lines.
Does that conflict with the shared parking that we already put in place? Because this looks like it's set up to do the shared parking thing that we were talking about.
That is what we're trying to work through. The shared and cooperative parking does have a distance from requirement that could step over that five feet buffer area, but it does complicate it a little bit, but it's, so that, that goes into kind of item 10 on the agenda a little bit that. So we have access aisles that are to loading spaces and parking areas. But would that term also be applied then to access aisles between parking lots? If that is the case, then those could not necessarily be in the setback. So we have come up with a parking lot mutual access agreement term to kind of separate that from that. But I still have to talk to Tammy on whether we would want city design standards for that strip or how we would want to regulate that strip. So we're just trying to think of a way that if you wanted to have the connected parking that the five feet buffer, I guess, could potentially then be 10 feet would become the buffer if it was on each lot. So 10 feet in the middle, five on five? Maybe not. Brian looks skeptical.
What? If you're confused, I stand no chance.
Following up what Patrick is just commenting there, currently the, what I've handed out, there's, so the BMP, the blue area, the blue section is approximately 10,470 square feet. The green area, the green around the perimeter is 37,269. So when you look at that from a development standpoint, that's 47,700. That's absolutely no return on investment, you know what I'm saying, parking lots to, to whatever. So I guess I'm looking for the, um, to try to remove that green out of the middle that's on the screen now. And go to the drawing that I have so that we can use shared parking and that kind of thing and cooperative parking. You know what I mean? Because we're, we're surrounding the whole project by green space. Imagine if there was, so the lot size is 60 foot, so imagine right now today, the way this is drawn with, pull the other one back up, Patrick, please. The, right there, you would have to drive out to redwood, arrow to pash to go from lot two to three. See what I'm saying?
So we for years have been looking at doing or promoting exactly this. Whether it be on Holly, whether it be on redwood, Sioux, Split Rock, like in, any place that we have this, we, we've been trying to limit accesses onto our main streets and encourage traffic actually on the property. So you're not having to come out and go back in and go back out and go back in. You know, we, we, we would like to encourage people once they're on property to not in and out, whatever. So the shared parking was supposed to help to do exactly what this is, which is we don't want concrete jungles of parking spots if we can get rid of them.
The discussion that Patrick and I had is the Vision Dolly Village. They have kind of a driving lane around the east perimeter. And then they got some trees and green space, but where you go from Target to all the other businesses, it's all open. See what I'm saying?
And we also look at that as how we don't want to have that much parking.
Correct.
Yeah.
If I may interject, I, I like the shared parking concept in general business. Because it, it, it promotes shared parking, it reduces access points. However, this isn't general business. To me, this is still neighborhood and we don't want acres of parking lot. This is intended to be a smaller scale. You know, we don't want to, we don't want an outlet mall here.
No.
Surrounded, you know, because you, you know, this could, this could grow to an entire city block with a bunch of lots. And then the, the middle of it is all parking lot. And I don't think that's the intent of what we want in a neighborhood business. Yeah, they're all individual lots. They all, each individually meet the requirements. But as you drive by, you see a vast parking lot. And I don't think that's the intent of a neighborhood business.
Well, actually, when you drive by, you would see buildings.
Well, it depends on where you put the parking, Tim. The parking could be in the front. This just happens to be in the middle. It could be, it could be facing the front just as easily. It could be, it could be a, a block long strip mall.
Can we have a say in that when they put in their preliminary plans? How the lot is laid out? How the buildings are placed on the lot?
We have zoning regulations that we, you know, we have to adhere to. And then Tammy, I think I will speak for her in her absence, but civil engineering, you know, grading, that type of thing would, would be her forte. And so I'm not sure how much we can get, you know, beyond what the zoning regulations are and beyond what normal standard practices for civil engineering. Then anything above that would be, you know, probably the prerogative of the developer. Is that answered a question?
So when we're presented the preliminary plans, we can't make suggestions on where the building should go versus where the parking lot is versus?
You could make suggestions. I just, if push came to shove, I, they are suggestions. If they meet all the engineering design standards and the zoning ordinance, well, you would be submitting our suggestions.
Okay.
If you wanted more control, there is the option of making everything a conditional use.
Marv's would have to pick them up and drive out, go back on the street.
I know.
Go back out. It's just, doesn't seem real neighborhood friendly as well to put more traffic if there's, if there's a traffic concern.
Would it be possible to keep the green area but provide access, two lane access areas between lot two and three and two and one?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I mean, at, at that point.
Drive way in, in between them.
Yeah.
And keep the rest of the green.
At that point, essentially what you're doing is doing those little pods that they have in parking lots where they have the trees planted in them and shrubs planted in them. Essentially, that's what you would be doing in these setback areas is doing those little pods and providing drive lanes in between. Well, we do have, we do have landscape standards in parking lots, right? Or at least for commercial lots.
They're going to be, those standards are going to be very minimal at this scale.
Now take redwood out of the picture and go to a development that's, or a lot that's an acre.
Yep.
You know what I mean? Wherever that is in town. And if a lot could be 60 foot wide, think about how that, how that would be to get in and out of, the same thing, where you'd have two or three of them right beside each other. Not because this is a three acre lot, but you don't even take in a one acre lot.
Yeah. So, you know, we've already, we've got an example of this in town already, sort of. It's, it's the, the building that, trying to think what business is, the high end glass place, used to be the boutique, that building and Arby's and The Grove. Those are two parking lots that have basically a driveline that connects them. Because it would make no sense for people to try to go back out on the split rock just to get from one building to the next.
I have no problem with an access between the two.
Yeah.
But I don't want it to be just
Wide open parking.
One row of parking. I think that defeats the purpose of a smaller scale for a residential area.
Now, when you go on Holly Boulevard between like, say, oh, well, it starts with the buildings. If you're really old, you remember it as Burgers and More, but boy, that's a long time ago. Now it's some storage units and whatnot, and Blaine sits there, and then you go down to another, another building and then another building. And that is all one giant parking lot. There is no dividers in that. But we would, we wouldn't want that, all of that property on Holly to have medians that don't allow you to go from one point to the next. And you'd have to go back out onto Holly and go back and in. I mean, that, that also is an example of what this is right here.
Wouldn't the other example be where the Pizza Ranch, all that is?
Absolutely.
Ace, you can drive through those parking lots all the way.
All the way to the expressway.
Yep.
And again, each one of those lots, I mean theoretically, we could have made them put green space between each one of those lots. And then you would be stuck going back out onto the split rock to get from the Pizza Ranch to the Ace to the whatever. I do think it's better to have it open-ish. I guess if we wanted to put some sort of landscaping or some sort of standard into the parking, we certainly could. Add trees, add something. You could still access all the property through, that would also make snow removal a little more challenging, which we just went through. I can't imagine trying to not knock over trees with two feet of snow, but.
Obviously, in snow removal, corners suck.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to shovel them out, you know what I mean? So just imagine as I was doing snow removal here, because that, there's a lot of corners there in the one that's on the screen now compared to an open.
If we do not allow parking in the setbacks, you wouldn't have a big line of parking. It'd be clustered, but we could still allow access through the setbacks.
Just like you have, you have access in your front yard setback. There's no difference having access in your side yard setback, that's what I'm trying to say here.
Yep.
I have no problem if there's an access aisle here, there's an access aisle here. I don't want to see this hall pavement, this hall pavement, and this hall pavement. That, that's a general business when that happens. When you, when you treat that as all parking lot and all buildings, that's general business. And it defeats the whole purpose of what we've spent months trying to scale down from general business.
The only thing, Brian, what's, what's there, if you took, that was general business on the screen, you would take away all the green on redwood and all the green on pash flower. You would only have it by the church and up against the houses. Because that would be, you could park there now. I could park in that area in general business. So we're, I think we're being very generous in giving up that much green, you know what I mean, around the perimeter. I, when you compare this to general business, they don't have the green already on the outside. Now we're putting big on the outside and we're putting 10 foot in the middle.
I guess when I look at this, I think we've already made, we've already scaled way down from general business just in what the permitted uses are, the size of the buildings, the, we've made a lot of concessions to make this not general business. I don't know.
So what happens when that, go to the other screen, please?
The one without, there.
When that goes to an entire city block? And somebody takes that same concept to an entire city block in the middle of a residential neighborhood and puts parking in the middle of it. This is, this is, this is one example. It's a specific site. But if we put this into the ordinance that you can, you have no, no setback requirements, this, this can continue to grow exponentially.
If we require the setbacks on the perimeter of the property?
I mean, this one, we're talking about three lots. This could be a city block with 20 lots next to each other, and it's all parking lot. And we have what's right across the street from the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, a strip mall. You got a strip mall, except you got your setbacks between the buildings. But you got one continuous row of parking. Is that really what we're intending here for neighborhood business? Because if it is, let's just, let's just go back to general business. Really, I mean, that's, that's what we, what's, what we're going to end up with here, guys.
But if we do that, it's not going to get passed to the council because they sent it back because they didn't want that.
No, no.
Well, no, we're hearing from the neighbors.
Yeah, but.
That's what they don't want.
We're.
So Lee, how do you feel about Brian's suggestion of having, you know, some landscaping in between that people can drive in between? Isn't that what you're talking about? How do you feel about that?
Well, obviously, it, snow removal is a big part of that today. You know, it's all, in the development side, it's all about, we're giving up, you know, over an acre now, you know what I mean, for green space? So at some point that, um, we zone ourself out of this particular land. You know, should it be general business? You know what I mean? I think we were compromising a lot by adding all that green space around the perimeter. Like I said, if you, if you didn't have that, there would be, you know, no requir, no required green space on pash or on redwood. You could park there. Today, we're taking 37,000 square feet of green space to that project. I know our project is unique. I don't think there'll be another project this big as a city block that's going to go NB because your hands are tied. And what you can do, they'll zone it general business or it won't happen. You know what I'm saying? I feel.
Anybody else up here have any comments on this? Or a recommendation for city staff? Okay, TJ.
TJ Barthman, 1016 South Nicholas Avenue. Just to kind of re, re-go down the path that Brian's on there, because I do, I do see where he's talking about it. He's saying, you know, if we eliminate the middle green, then we're, then we're back to general business. And I just want to, we, we're, we're still not even close to being back to general business because of the extended perimeter setbacks we have on NB versus GB. So even though if we eliminated the middle green, the perimeter green is way more excessive in this NB than it would be on GB. So by eliminating the middle green, we're, we're, we're not, we're not going back to GB. We're not even close to GB. Our setbacks are way more than GB. We could park in the setbacks in a, in a GB, which here we can't. So just the perimeter itself sets it drastically apart from general business. Drastically.
I would also say that the permitted uses will separate general business from neighborhood business drastically. There are a lot of things we don't allow for. Yes, sir?
Don DeJager, 504 Mayberry. Thank you. Don DeJager, 504 Mayberry. I want to express the sentiment. I strongly agree with Brian. The whole point of this is to make it look like a neighborhood, not just for this development, but for future developments in Brandon. If someone drives by and looks at the type of businesses there, they aren't going to know it's a neighborhood. It's going to look like general. But the lettering on the front of a building is when you drive by it, it looks like it belongs there. You got setbacks around when you have the greenery, the trees, and the things through the middle. And then you're able to drive from one lot to the next. From the appearance standpoint, it's going to look like it belongs in a neighborhood. It's not going to look like a big square. I know we've been making concessions as far as what type of businesses and such can be in there, but driving by, you're not going to, that's not going to make it look like it belongs there. I mean, if it's a Macy's or a hardware store, it's the size of the buildings, it's the appearance, it's the greenery. From a homeowner's standpoint, and I understand Chuck's, you know, comment too, you know, having it kicked back, you know, trying to find that compromise between what homeowners want, what we want for the future of Brandon, but the emphasis is this isn't just for our development. This is for the other areas in Brandon. And by having a solid parking lot, it's not going to have at all the appearance of belonging there in the neighborhood. So I'm very much for having the shared parking, being able to access one lot to the next. I understand the argument of having to drive out, go back around. But I see that kind of all over. We're able to access one business by the next and you drive through, you know, two space, two lot, two parking spot area to, to get to the next one. So as a homeowner, that's definitely what I want to see for the future, for there and for the future of Brandon. So it looks like it belongs. Thank you.
Bradley Walls, 609 North Tamrec Avenue. I just wanted to come up here and say that, I mean, for the most part, I feel like this whole thing has just been a conversation between the community and the city at large. I mean, for the most part. communication is on both sides, I feel. I mean, very much expressing what we want. I know this has kind of been a huge pain and like long-going thing. Trust me, I'm gaslit, it's going on. Getting towards the end of that too, but I completely agree. I mean, it can be very disheartening to hear that, you know, we go through this huge process just to turn back around and go back to general business for this, you know? I agree with, you know, maybe there's a certain circumstance where it's up to a certain lot size that you can go into shared parking. One biggest thing, I guess, for neighbors and, I mean, us just coming into this whole process thinking, we really wanted this to limit the amount of businesses that could go in there, just to protect the neighborhoods around it. I feel like we found a pretty good compromise with what could go in there. We were all pretty, I mean, I was excited to hear about some of the things going, so. With that, I'd just like to thank you guys for putting this effort into it and having communication with the community and, you know, throwing it out there with city council as well, so, thank you.
Shawna Schipper, six oh one Tamarack. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna also kind of agree. With, with my neighbors and stuff, you know, you can actually put snow in that, you know, in that center green spot. Whereas if that's taken away, it's all gonna go up along my fence and then when it melts, it goes and, you know, it's gonna potentially flood. Because like all that snow out there now has to go somewhere. And now they're, you're gonna have buildings and, you know, pavement, all that snow has to go somewhere. Well, obviously, they're gonna push it up against the fence, like they always do. Well, having a little bit of extra green, they can throw some of that snow up there too. And nobody's really brought this up here, so I'm just gonna bring it up, you know. Could we also add in general business, like for, probably not for, you know, this situation, but other situations as a transition? Like buying the lot behind you. So if behind my house, I could purchase a lot and put a garage back there. It seems like a lot of people don't come, move out to Brandon because they can't have their man cave out back. So is that something that we could add? You know, it would be a garage type of thing that would probably match their house. So it's something like that, you know, no more than fifty percent green space, just a, like a shop or something. Because I know, like, my brother owns a business, when he gets home, he wants to work on his, like, show cars and stuff. But we don't really have anything like that where you could just have a shed behind your house. Just wondering if that's something that we could.
So you can have a shed behind your house?
No, no, like.
Up to how many square feet? Thousand square feet. And I'm sure you, they would gladly sell you land behind your house if you'd like to buy some from them. All you'd have to do is replat it into one lot and you can put a thousand square foot shed back there.
Okay.
Can you build a giant?
No, no, I mean, that's not, I mean, like, but I know my brother's like, he's, he had wanted, thought about it and he's like, and they wouldn't let him do it at one point. So. So I don't know why, what the deal was, but he, because he's got a, he's stable of five cars and then he's got his man cave in a different place, you know, so.
You can have a thousand square foot shed in your backyard, as long as it meets setbacks.
As long as the footprint of the house is one square foot larger than the.
Yeah, you can't build an accessory structure bigger than your house.
Okay.
That also is not allowed.
Oh, yeah, and see, like, he doesn't want a big house, he doesn't, you know, he want, he has his cars, he doesn't have kids. So, so you would say no to the, to that, having a shed for.
A shed bigger than a house?
Or a, a garage. A garage or like a she shed or a man cave or something for.
Well, there's lots of places in the industrial park that you can do that.
Uh, no, but I mean, like, attached to your house. Because I thought.
Yeah, you can also not have a, an attached garage larger than a footprint of your home as well.
Correct.
Yeah, there, there's regulations and, and the board has looked at that, city council has looked at that, so.
Okay.
He can certainly come tomorrow morning, we can talk to him if you want to.
Uh, he already did that. That's why he asked.
It must not have met the regulations.
Prob, uh, I don't know what the, he wanted a bigger, he doesn't want a big house.
Okay, and that's probably what he said, the garage is probably larger than the home.
All right, from up here, anybody have any thoughts on this parking? So that we can give a recommendation to the city about whether we think there should be landscaping, whether there should be accessways, whether we should have open parking?
I'm still confused on this. How much we're giving up between the GB and the NB?
No idea.
So this is probably more directed to Lee and TJ, but they're saying all of this green space, not, not in this diagram, but in the other diagram, if you want to bring that up, please. They're saying all of the green space here would not be required in GB. I'm not sure I understand that argument.
Um, I, go ahead.
So it's where Redwood and Paskflower, that's a twenty-five foot setback? Yep.
If this was, if this was GB, you're saying there would be no, none of that green.
I could park there, I could park in that green area.
The, the church and the houses on the. That would still be.
Off, off-street parking.
But that's it.
Here's, here's the ordinance, I just pulled up the off-street parking.
Patrick, if you.
Rear yard off-street parking for CB and GB are allowed in the rear yard so long as they are not within the setback.
Yep, the rear yard, you said rear yard.
That's rear yard.
Yep.
Side yard. For CB and GB, parking spaces are not allowed within the setbacks. However, they are allowed within the side yard.
You said side, yep, yard, yep.
And not, not the setback. They're allowed in the side yard, not the setback.
Okay.
Okay. So now, when we go back up to the CB and GB, or sorry, the GB. Sorry, I want to make sure I'm stating this correctly here. In a general business, the rear yard is five feet with keynote three, side yard is seven feet. Keynote three, a rear yard of twenty feet is required where a lot is adjacent to a residential. So that's no different than NB, what we're proposing for NB.
Right, we're talking.
Still have that twenty foot setback in your rear yard.
Yep, where that's, the rear yard is the, where it touches the church.
Right.
That's what's drawn there, if you look really close at your drawing there, it says twenty.
So you would still have that in.
Yep. So the, where it touches Paskflower and where it touches Redwood, Brian, you could park. And Patrick's gonna pull that up, what part of the, no, the ordinance where we can talk, GB, we can park in the setback. That, all that green that's drawn is the setback.
But this, this does not allow parking in the setback.
NB doesn't, not, but GB does. That's where our concession is.
Where, where are you finding that?
That's where he's gonna.
I don't see that in the ordinance.
You have to get to the front yard, not the rear side yard.
Under general business, this is all-street parking, general business, front yard. Parking spaces are allowed within the front yard and setback.
Right.
Yes. So that means.
I don't disagree with that one.
Okay.
So he could park all the way along Redwood and Paskflower.
I understand that, that's not the one I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
So you don't think that it's thirty-seven thousand square feet, you just think he's giving up this space?
Yes, that's, to me, that's the only thing you're giving up, is the front yard setback, parking.
Okay.
Not the rear, not the side.
I agree, I agree, hundred percent, hundred percent, Brian, I agree with you.
Oh, TJ said we were giving up all this green space. We're giving up half of the green space.
Well, a little bit more, because the other one is.
Between CB and GB.
Twenty and then seven, seven and twenty, where the other one is twenty-five on Pask and, and Redwood. Pask and Redwood, the front.
I'm not talking about the front yards, Pask and Redwood, I'm, that, I agree, that's a, those are front yards. But between the NB and the GB, your rear yard setback is no different if it's a budding residential.
I agree, hundred percent.
So they're not giving up forty-seven thousand square feet, they're giving up twenty-seven thousand square feet.
The, the strip, the two strips on the north and the strip on the.
So you just have a problem with the amount of square footage? And that's it.
Well, I don't want to talk about square footage, all, all I'm saying is we're.
They, they are, they are conceding what could be parking in the front yard. They couldn't park in the side, in the rear yard anyway, so they're not really conceding that. What they're conceding is the parking they could do in the front yard.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I heard someone say, we're giving up all this green space already.
So they, 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 they said that they were giving up forty-seven thousand square feet between the green space and the.
And I don't know what forty-seven represents.
I don't either, but what they are giving up is the, the parking that is allowed in the front setback. So that is a, a big concession between NB and, and general business as it is currently.
And that just happens because this is a corner lot. If this was a front lot, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be talking about that, but it's a corner lot and that's what you deal with when you live on a corner lot, just like a residential property has to deal with different setback requirements on a corner lot.
Yep, but they could park in it if it was general business.
I understand that.
Yes.
I'm just, the buildable area is, is different.
It's probably about the same, yes. Okay, so back to the question at hand. Brian would like landscaping between the land, between the lots?
That's what I heard from the public.
Okay. We have discussed whether or not it would be good to have drivelanes, whether it would be good to have the landscaping because of snow removal and whatnot, maintenance. So what are you guys' thoughts? Because we'll have to come up with a recommendation for council, whether or not they listen to it, I have no idea, but we have to have a recommendation for them.
I'd agree with Brian and have a driveline between them, so you could access them still.
Okay.
I agree with the drivelanes room too. I think when there's a lot of snow, people who shop there will complain about that the snow isn't being removed to their liking. So could backfire on us.
I mean, the snow is kind of irrelevant to me. It's, we live in South Dakota, it's gonna snow. And if you get that much snow in there, it's probably gonna be hauled out anyway. Because you're gonna need spots for parking.
Yep.
Well, it also allows a place to put snow. So, yeah, it does, it does hinder, is it easier or harder to remove snow? Maybe, but it does also allow a place to put that snow.
Fourteen feet. Fourteen feet.
Well, this is, as I mentioned before, this is what the people ask for, more green space.
Okay.
And as I mentioned before, to start this all off, we needed access between them to prevent going back out and back in.
Okay.
So I agree with that.
Chuck in Brooks, you have anything to add? As long as we have access between lots, so that we're not going back out. I mean.
I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that says you can't have an access aisle through a side yard.
That's what we are trying to make crystal clear with in ten. I, I don't think there's anything that, it's, it comes down to definitions, of course, because it's zoning. So your access aisles and maneuvering in driveways are connected to what they lead to, being parking spaces or loading areas or where they go. So we tried to come up with a, a term that would cover the, the drivelanes between, call them mute, mutual access easements or something along that effect. The parking lot mutual access easement, so that's kind of where that language comes from. It was just designed to clarify some definitions with the driveway being the principal access to the lot versus parking lot mutual access easement versus access aisle. We tried to come up with terms where your drivelanes between the lots would not be subject to the access aisle restrictions for leading to parking spaces. That would have to match the parking space requirement for location.
Okay.
That's what that's designed to do, whether it's kind of half-baked at this point, it, it might be the case.
Okay.
Just a first stab at it.
Brooks? Ditto?
Yeah, I don't disagree. My primary focus has always been the residential boundaries and, but I guess I see that, you know, having a little more green space in this case is probably a good thing, not a bad thing, so I agree.
Okay. Are, do we have landscape standards for this green space or does it just have to be bushes and trees? Because grass won't grow there.
Um, not general, it's part, I don't think it's that specific on there. It just says a landscaping strip with a minimum width of five feet shall be located between the parking lot and adjoining lot lines. There are other sections in the landscaping standards talking about one tree per thousand square feet of lot area or portion is required. And it talks about how many can be a certain kind of tree that we talked about eliminating, just because once, if it can only be twenty-five percent deciduous ornamental, evergreen or coniferous, what's left? So we talked about, so it's not too defined. They could put that tree kind of wherever they wanted.
Perfect.
So you could have a strip.
Okay, one last question, um, which is the on and off sale alcohol establishments.
Before we go to that, Tim, I'm still, I'm concerned on page twenty-three. Two more buddy commercial industrial lots utilizing access. So I'm gonna be the devil's. I'm gonna be the devil's advocate. And what would prevent me from putting a mutual access easement right down the middle, right down the property line? Of every property.
Nothing.
So what we've just discussed could be right out the window.
We couldn't park in it.
Right, but it'd be pavement, you could have parking.
Um, this does say if authorized by a conditional use permit.
And that's something we kind of played around for. How much would you all want to control that? Would we write it into our parking lot engineering design standards? Just because if we set no standards for that mutual access easement, you could effectively eliminate the entirety of the green space and all that could be the mutual access easement.
I mean, as long as it's not a parking stall, it could be a drive aisle and you could.
We're gonna address this in number ten?
It, it'll be a further discussion of it, however you all feels best to address it, whether it's conditional use permit or Tammy sits down and comes up with a maximum size and width and everything for these access easements and, and she enforces it through site plan review, or if you all would want some control on how big they are, where they are. If you would like that control or would you like to rely on city staff to do it?
Okay, so I think we'll deal with parking in item number ten. So let's deal with the on-sale, off-sale alcohol. Because if we talk anymore about parking, I'm gonna want to do signs again. So same thing down the table, what do you guys think about on-sale, off-sale? Yes, no, both, no both, yes to one, no to the other? Do you know what they are, do you know the difference between them?
I'm okay with both.
Just for clarity for the public, on-sale is you consume it on the premises. Off-sale is you can take it with you, so gas station versus restaurant.
And there is a difference between on-sale liquor and on-sale beer and wine?
Correct, the state law has a whole lot of distinctions about type of alcohol permits.
And we don't only have, what, do we have one liquor license left in the city?
I don't know for sure, but that's probably right.
Do you remember, Bart?
Pretty quick.
Maybe two? And one the city would love to sell? And then we also have beer and wine is a whole different.
Malt beverage is unlimited, right? Beer and wine is malt.
I'm not an expert on that, but I think so.
Believe that beer and wine is, I don't know if it's unlimited, but it's a lot less restrictive than alcohol. Um, there is a difference too between off-sale, which we are, I think, almost at our capacity on off-sale as well. Because we already have, I know two or three businesses coming to town that are wanting those licenses, so we might be out of. we might be out of off sale licenses as well. Which is the sale of liquor that you take out of the store. That is also a state restriction, I believe, I think, anyway. Most municipalities with a third penny would be off the charts if you let them sell as much as they want. There'd be thirty liquor stores in town. They'd all go broke, but I mean, there would be thirty of them, they would try, yeah. So Chuck said both. You guys have anything else? You agree with him? Don't agree with him? Well, the off sale will be limited by the, the ability to even get a license. And so will the-
You made a neat point already.
Yeah, so will the on sale liquor, at least. And most restaurants now are serving beer and wine anyway, so.
From the beginning of this, I had immediately thought about on sale because of thinking of a small restaurant or whatever, so I was with that and having heard the point about the limited availability of off sale, I guess I don't care much if we allow both in this situation, I guess, so.
And I imagine just we would keep it consistent and they would both be conditional use permit for.
Yes, they are currently, even in general business, no matter where you put them, you do have to get a conditional use.
So if a business would move to your neighborhood and we adopt that, you would get a notice and you could speak on that as well.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to the neighborhood business discussion?
I do, just to the neighborhood business, I got a question for you. Can the, go, Patrick, if you can pull up the screen with the green in the middle, in the setback area, can that be converted to the BMP? Would that be considered?
Ooh, well.
See what I'm saying? Um, so I'm ten foot wide and I've put my water there.
We don't necessarily require where it goes, we just require that it goes to a place.
BMPs are outside of zoning. How you design your BMPs to fit within setbacks.
BMPs would be an engineer, um, yeah.
You can put your BMP wherever you want.
I would think so. Well, you'd have a hard time getting a driveline through a BMP.
No, we would have a driveway.
I know.
But would that suffice?
Many, many parking lots are laid out and they utilize the island spaces between parking as their BMP areas.
Yes.
Yes, so that, that would accommodate what you're asking.
I mean, if you wanted to put even culverts in and, and create drivelanes, you could still move water.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can bury them.
And create a BMP.
You can do underground.
Actually, we do have that stipulation as well.
We just wouldn't want to put a BMP and then also need five feet on each side.
No.
You know what I mean?
It, it could be in the setback, from my understanding, and, and even principles, like if you use principles of ziriscaping, which we've done before, you can bury containment pods that, that would hold that water, yeah.
Cheap, but.
No, it's just another way to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. You, we answered your questions, Patrick?
I believe so.
Okay. With those questions answered, how far away are we from doing a first reading on this?
Um, once we get item ten fully fleshed out, I, we can present a draft and you, the next one, and you can schedule it for a public hearing if you feel it is complete.
I have a question about the procedure.
Yep.
Yeah. So we recommended to the, there was originally a, a request to have this particular property switched to general business.
Correct.
We re-recommended to pass, the city council never voted on that yet?
They did, it was denied, the rezon was denied, I think.
It was?
I believe so.
I thought they just sent it back to us with telling us to make this.
From the minutes is it was denied with the recommendation that you all put together in NB district.
So that's not still up in the air that?
It is not.
Okay.
There is, for a rezon, it's my understanding, there is no time period. Some of them require you can't, you can't submit the same or substantially the same thing for six months. I don't think that's the case for the rezon. So Lee could-
Hey, you're the lawyer.
Yeah, I, I think that's how it reads. That's what I remember, Brian and I have talked about this at length, just, but I think that's how it is for rezon, but you would have to check the zoning ordinance to be sure. But it, it is my recollection that it was denied at city council.
But he could submit it immediately for a different zone.
He could submit it for GB tomorrow morning if he wanted to. I believe, so we'd have to double check the ordinance, but I think so.
Okay, are you good? Okay. Let's move on to item number nine, R2 medium density residential. What?
So you talked about this quite a few months ago, reducing the R2 setback on single-family dwellings from seven to five. The fire chief sent you all a email letter at that time that I provided to you, laying out all sorts of safety concerns.
Yes.
Tammy and I met with the developer committee and they would like to rediscover that possibility with you all. So the agenda, the ordinance, as we had written it up last time, is what's presented to you and I believe Brian is here to discuss with you if you would be willing to reconsider.
So if I remember this correctly, there, like say, the city of Sioux Falls allows for five feet, five foot setbacks.
That's right.
Is that right? To allow for ten feet between houses?
Correct.
In a perfect world, we'd have twenty feet between houses, but we know what land costs are and what it costs to develop things, so.
Yeah, we're currently at fourteen feet in Brandon.
We are currently at fourteen feet, yes.
So I give a setback. Seven, seven.
So would you like to come speak? You're more than welcome, you came all the way out here. We might as well let you have the, have the floor.
Thank you, Brian Jackson, I'm the land development manager of Van Busker Companies. Yeah, we've, we've talked about this subject a couple of different times. Original conversation or when I first brought it up was when we, uh, you were reviewing and approving our preliminary subdivision plan for the Stone Ridge neighborhood. Um, with our intent to do, uh, the five-foot side yards was for lots that we're gonna back up to I-90 uh, to create a buffer between that and the R1 zoning that would have your additional, uh, seven-foot side yard setbacks. Um, during conversations with the development committee, I mean, there are some other plans that I believe Tammy's been presented that might have some of the same type of considerations asked for, mainly for villa homes, which are generally your slab-on-grade, you know, type of, you know, single-level home, um, usually the higher-end amenities that you, you find and they're just put together a little bit closer. Sometimes they come with HOAs, so the lawn maintenance and snow removal, which is a big topic anymore, um, are taken care of, um, in that manner. So i- i- in a lot of cases, what they're utilized for would be transitional use between maybe, like I said, an arterial road getting into a major or more of a residential area. More of the neighborhood part where you're not gonna have the, the houses with the fourteen-foot side yard, you know, the setbacks backing up to more of a street where you can get those villa homes in, compact them a little bit better, I mean, there is a market for it, I mean, that's, we wouldn't be here if there wasn't a market for it. And to allow to, you know, gradually go from a villa-sized home to a more medium-sized home to possibly a larger home as you get into more of the heart of the neighborhood with that. So, um, I, I did have an opportunity to, to read the email from the fire chief and he, and he does have valid points and that's his job, you know, even if a volunteer situation, he's a no. Um, but, you know, I think I, I went through and just did some quick looking here and, and as far as side yard setbacks go, and, and they range from three feet to seven feet, for the most part. Um, I tried to look at communities that had volunteer fire departments, just to be similar with that. So Mitchell's at three, Yankton's at five, Hersberg's at seven, but will allow with a conditional use to go down to five.
Who did you say was at three?
Uh, Mitchell, I believe.
Mitchell only has three foot.
And there are two. Yeah, I printed it, I think it's Mitchell. It's the only one, I have all the other ones labeled, but this one I forgot. But yeah, I mean, a- and like I said, obviously I was going out and looking for ones that were probably smaller. I was trying to look at communities that would be similarly sized, but mostly ones that would have a volunteer fire department with it. So, uh, what it basically does is just allow us the option to do it. And, you know, it would be the minimum, I mean, if something would come up or any developer would come in, they could still do the seven-foot side yards, obviously.
Yep.
Um, with that. A- and I think one of the things that the fire chief had, obviously, was access, you know, we'd like to see the space between there. I, I think the proximity of the, of the structures to each other is a factor, but not as much as people who would have six-foot tall privacy fences, chain-link fences, shrubbery.
Um, yeah, we also, yeah, we don't stop people from planting shrubs in their setbacks, which means you could have two shrubs that grow into each other, your access is basically.
And, and so, a- and obviously in his email, I mean, he's fairly a realist, I think. He said, these are my concerns, obviously, if there's a market for it. And, and I was, I, I went to their, um, I don't know if it was their annual meeting or Christmas dinner or whatever it was here a few weeks ago and I was just amazed by the number of calls that your, your volunteer fire department goes on here. I think they're almost averaging like two a day, um, with that. So I totally understand, you know, the ease of getting in and, and doing those things, but i- in the, I mean, and then I look at some of our walkout lots and topography of Brandon where you're at, where you know, you're at the street level, next you know, you're twelve foot down and there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that are there that I think that in their, in their jobs as volunteer firefighters that they have to overcome when they get in there and, and, and as far as, you know, fire spreading, and we have a development up at Lake Madison and that's what, you know, it's the Wentworth Fire Department and that's exactly what the neighbors tell you is that if the fire department's coming, they're not here to put the fire out, they're here to keep it from going to your house, you know, and those are at lake properties. Um, I think the response times, while if, if he does say they're a little slower, probably, uh, still very good and I think that's why you find the fire department has the equipment with the ladders and the saws to access the fire from the roof, it's because they're still containing it within the structure. Um, if it was going to be spreading there, I would imagine, I'm no expert, but there'd probably be an explosion of some sort with it. But anyway, um, that's our conversation, you know, we'd just like to see, um, just the opportunity to do it, to be specific for R2, obviously it would be, in my, from my way I'm looking at it, would be new developments, a- and would be incorporated into a, a neighborhood plan.
So when it comes to a building code, um, do you not allow windows between structures?
In residential, you can, you're, you're allowed to have windows.
Even with five-foot setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. What do you guys think about this?
I'm okay with that.
Just to keep in mind, this is the R2 district. You, you talked about it originally as the R1 and you kind of flat-out rejected that, that's why this is proposing for the R2.
Well, yes, and, and single-family homes in R2, we're looking at smaller lots anyway. Yes. Does anybody have a problem with?
I think I was gone at the meeting, isn't, so isn't this what we suggested before? Is this different than what we were suggesting before? What's different about this than?
This is the same thing you were, you considered before, including there is one tweak to the, there, you'll see an X crossed out in number five on single-family detached.
What page?
Just because if, if you have a house next to a house, you need the increased setback. So that's was, that, that seemed to have been originally intended for apartments. So that's why that, that's the other change, other than the setback, is the cross out of C number five in the side yard setback column for single-family dwellings. If it was an R2 single-family dwelling next to an R1 single-family dwelling, would you require the fifteen-foot setback?
I guess, um, if this is the R2, if it's R2 against an R1, I, I would like to see us require to be seven feet.
Okay.
If it's R2 to R2, five feet's okay, but R2 against R1 should go back to seven foot.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
We all good with that? All right. You good with that, Patrick?
Yep, we will write it up and set it for our public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Page number thirty-one, item number ten, off-street parking definitions.
So this does relate to the previous topic, but it's more broadly in that it applies to definitional changes. The big one is currently the definition of driveway is a private road that gives access from a public roadway to a garage, side yard, or rear yard. There's potentially some issues there with, is a driveway only going from a public roadway onto a lot? Are there driveways going from a private roadway or mutual access easement onto lots? Do they just go to a garage, side yard, or rear yard? So what is, how do we want to define what a driveway is? How is that different than an access aisle? When does a driveway become an access aisle, that kind of thing? So we're just trying to clarify some terms, so we're all on the same page, what is what? And one of those is, is a mu- is a connection between parking lots, would that be the same thing as we consider an access aisle to? How do we define access aisle? It's, we're trying to come up with terms so we can efficiently apply the zoning ordinance. So.
Okay.
And if we are in agreement that you would allow, as we talked about before, mutual access easements between parking lots, who would you like to be the one that sets the standards and reviews those? Would you all like to review those with conditional use permit? If we set some base standards, would you prefer Tammy do so in the engineering design standards? How would you like to address the review of those?
Would one be easier for you guys at staff than another?
I wish she was here to ask.
So that was my, my question, I mean, Tammy's one person, basically, how much stuff can you put on her pipe? Expect her to get it all done?
Yep.
She, she and Adam.
I mean, they already have a lot to do when it comes to reviewing plans, I guess. Um, if we could, if we could, if it would be a help, at least to that department, that we would do them by conditional use, we certainly could. If it makes it slower and more bulky, then I don't know if I'd be in favor of it. Like if she doesn't mind doing it with the design standards.
The, kind of the conflict between the things are, if you have set standards and the engineer reviews them, what you have is a set guideline, by conditional use permit is very subject to.
Yes.
Situational, so you could have a pretty close situation where they are given quite a large access easement where a similar one would have a smaller one. So it, there would be some. It could, it could get a little fuzzy with things, okay?
Yeah, I think there's another joke.
Okay.
So historically, we've liked to try to write rules so that we don't do as many conditional uses simply because it's easier and it's less subjective and then we just have a distance or a lot or a setback or whatever, so that we're not, we're not using as many opinions. It's easier if the ordinance is written and a rule is followed. I guess the, the thing is just coming up with whatever number you would want. And I guess, you know, when it comes to this, I would lean on Tammy with her engineering design standards to tell us what she would like to see or what she thinks is appropriate. And I guess if they wanted over that, then they can always come for a, they could come for an ask. But then, for the most part, it would just be part of her standard reviewing process.
Right, right, yeah. My impression is that the board doesn't want to be rethinking with the staff is, you know, unless it gets to be a gray area, I mean.
I mean, we're, we're happy to help, but yes, if we can put the, if we can put the ordinances in place and, and you guys can then enforce them, that's sort of what we're supposed to be doing.
Right. The benefit of your review would be not all, it, rather than just having a cookie-cutter approach where this is what it is, you would have a more independent approach where this is appropriate for a mutual access easement versus not. But it's all up to what you all are most comfortable with.
I agree, Jim. The less that we have to deal with, I think it's better.
Do you have any ideas on definitions? They probably technically aren't necessary, I'm just trying to clarify things.
What we have learned, Patrick, is the more definitions we have, the better off we are.
And if you have any thoughts on how they could be better worded, that's, I'm open for it too. We're just trying to, parking is far more complicated than it should be.
No. Didn't you already?
We could.
Is that what this is?
I think there's a couple definitions that are missing. So, as I look at this, the intent is an access aisle.
We need your buzzer, man.
She's not here. And acts, to me, as I'm reading this, an access aisle, the intent of that is, that's to be within, within the property, within the setbacks.
Correct.
The mutual access easement is a connection between adjacent properties. What's missing are a couple definitions. Not, not, not parking lot mutual access easement, but mutual access easement. And we have an example of that right here between where two parcels share the same access point. To access their property.
You mean that driveway between lot two and three? Is that what you're talking about? I didn't turn around. I probably should have.
Yeah. Because that's, that's different than a parking lot mutual access easement.
Correct.
So, what did you want to define that as?
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's different than what's defined here. And then the other issue is, I'm going to get up and point again, sorry, Tim. Here I go. To prevent somebody from making this a mutual access to allow access to this parcel. Because we have a lot of that as well. We have that down at the corner where Redwood turns and turns into...
So, you would...
Sioux Boulevard.
You would rather...
All of those houses are accessed with a private mutual access road. And that's where I'm saying, what's to prevent somebody from running mutual access easements right down the property line and eliminating that, that ten, that seven-foot setback?
Wouldn't they have to get a conditional use for that?
Nope. They don't have to come here for a mutual access.
If you all want to be the ones to review it, otherwise, we would have to work with Tammy to better clarify what those look like. And that's something she would review.
I mean, as far as the driveway, I think we can handle that in a definition, right? Whether it's shared or not shared, that could actually be just wrapped up in the driveway definition? I don't know if we have to do a second definition just for a driveway that's on, that's shared. Because do we care if it's shared or not?
Yeah, but what happens when that runs all the way through your entire side yard, and you eliminate your green space?
You mean, as far as the driveway goes?
Yes.
Well, each lot would have a certain amount of driveway they could have, right?
Right. So, here's my concern, Tim. I think everybody here is okay with this, that, hey, I enter here and I enter here. But what happens when this goes all the way down?
Yeah.
And now you've eliminated this green space. What happens if you got another lot here, and there's another easement? Another lot here, there's another one. Now you got a big strip mall.
Yep.
With continuous pavement.
Okay. What are your thoughts on that, Patrick? Or anybody up here, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree with what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
I mean, people can be creative to get, get around the ordinance.
People think zoning is...
So, we solve that with the definitions, is that what you're...
Well, we would solve it as what we allow and what we don't allow, yeah.
And that's the hard part. When does the driveway become the access easement? How long does the driveway go?
Yes, TJ.
Just a question. How did, how did it get written for, like, Dairy, the new Dairy Queen? It's the same thing.
Yep.
And it got passed somehow.
How did what get passed?
The new Dairy Queen.
The mutual access easement, that we access the Dairy Queen.
You can't get into the Dairy Queen parking lot without going into the bank. That's a mutual access.
That is, yes.
That's both. That's coming off of Split Rock, and that's going through the two parking lots.
I don't know. I think technically, the only mutual access was to Split Rock, wasn't it?
No, because you can't get from the bank parking lot into the Dairy Queen without...
So, technically, the mutual access easement, I believe, goes from the Dairy Queen parking lot to Split Rock. Yes, it's open, and you can drive through it if you're a customer.
But the bank could close off that access to the north.
They could, theoretically.
If they wanted to.
Yes.
Correct, so you got two there.
And Dairy Queen could have no say in it.
Yeah, and then they would be landlocked.
No, because they'd still have the access to...
You can't. If you, if you come off Split Rock into that bank parking lot, I have to, I am on the bank parking lot, and I have to go to, I have to go left into Dairy Queen.
Yeah, but that's a mutual access going east and west.
The one on the north, the hall, it could be shut off.
Right.
The one on the north, across from the grocery store, they could shut that off, and Dairy Queen would have no say in it.
Correct, but if the bank, if the bank shut off, Dairy Queen itself is landlocked without the bank access.
Yes.
So, you've got a Split Rock access, and you've got a parking lot access. You've got both to get into Dairy Queen. You can't, you can't...
Well, they have access to their parking lot.
Correct.
Through the...
Bank parking lot.
Through the access easement.
Right, so the bank can't, can't do anything, can't take that away.
Their parking lot.
Because that's...
Right, but what I'm saying is, the question you proposed was the difference in the two, that's an example of you already have both. How was that defined?
Right, so, in their situation, that, that access aisle is on, totally on the bank's property.
True.
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay. What I'm saying is, what would prevent somebody from putting that down, a shared, right down the middle of the two properties, within that, within the two seven-foot setbacks? That's, that's how that residential area is done, down there on the corner of Redwood and Sioux Boulevard?
I think that's called the wood lawn, or whatever.
I don't know what that development is.
That street is, okay.
It kind of curves back there.
Yep, exactly. Yep, it's got a little cul-de-sac to come back out on.
Right, sort of. I mean, somebody could go in and do this in an NB district, and now you've eliminated...
Your green space.
Your green spaces. They could do it in the front yard.
Right, because honestly, so Dairy Queen still has green space on the front of its parking lot.
Mm-hmm, as do those.
Unless you drove a driveway right over the top of it, and then it would be eliminated.
Not the front.
Not the front.
This would still have, this would still have a front green space.
Although, what did we consider the front yard of Dairy Queen?
Split Rock.
Split Rock's the front yard, so that's actually side yard.
That's a side yard to the north.
To the north, which is a side yard.
Which is same as this. Our front would be green space along past.
Yep.
Our side yard is in contention.
Well, they also have, but they have their green space in their side yard as well.
Between them and the school?
Between them and the bank. Isn't there some green space between them and the bank, in between the parking spots?
There's a little island there.
There's aisles.
Little island, a little bit.
Yeah.
Definitely not ten feet.
You're not growing tomatoes in it, but...
It's not ten feet, yeah, that's my point. So, I guess that's where I'm a little confused. We've already got this in town, and yet we're debating...
I think the debate is that we don't have the definitions locked down. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure why things, or how they were approved in the past. I'm just trying to make sure that we have a clear path forward.
That would be...
But that requires us to tweak definitions. I'm not sure why things were approved that way in the past. I just want to make sure we're on the level now.
Correct.
Not that we probably weren't in the past, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear what, what is what.
So, we can either spend the time defining this, or we can look at them all through conditional use and either approve or not approve them.
We would probably need to define it, so you could...
I mean, we would define it, but it would be, but it would be allowed through conditional use instead of by engineer review.
If we kept that language from the last, in the NB section, that language, that, that required conditional use, but that could be a engineering department review, or conditional use, or whatever you think is appropriate.
I'd like to wait and see what Tammy has to say about it.
Now, that unfortunately would slow down a public hearing, because he was looking for us to give him an answer to this tonight, yes? Or would you be okay with us waiting until we at least get some guidance from our engineering department as to how she would like to handle it?
There, I guess there's a couple of things we could do. If she doesn't want to handle it at all, we could push it forward as the language is written. If she would like to handle it, it's easy enough to write engineering department instead of conditional use. The problem is, we would need to come up with...
Standards?
Yes.
But doesn't she?
She would need to come up with some engineering design standards, and those would be, the city council would have to approve the engineering design standards.
Correct. So, that wouldn't really be on our plate, in this, in this room, anyway.
I, I don't believe so, but I imagine your input on those would probably be good to have, even if it's not required, just because you all are the masters of the zoning ordinance, and this impacts land use.
We are.
Your opinions are important.
Who knew? Okay. Well, then, I think that maybe we should postpone this discussion until Tammy's around. Is everybody okay with that? And at least get her, like, I am all for the staff doing as much of it as possible, but I guess if it's going to be something that needs to be reviewed by conditional use, we can. I guess I would, I would lean on her a little bit for that, whether or not she wants to review them herself, or even come up with the design standards for us to review, I guess.
One of our plans was to reach out to the city of Sioux Falls, because you have areas like Dolly Farms, that it's a parking lot with islands. I did, I, I'm by no means an expert on Sioux Falls zoning ordinance, but I was trying to look through it today to get a sense of why they do what they do, and it doesn't look like they have a similar requirement for, that's a blanket buffer between a parking lot and a property line. They have that requirement for certain types of zoning districts against another one, but not for necessarily all parking lots. But if it's over a certain amount of size, or a certain amount of spaces, islands are required, so that's why you probably have a whole bunch of islands out there. But I don't, so, that's, we're trying to sort that out, why, what they have what they do, and if they have anything related to it.
They have, like, forty plan reviewers, like, you have to have an advanced eligibility degree to figure out how to put a shed in their backyards. I mean, there's a reason why we do what we do.
So, we will get some input when we can track Tammy down.
Perfect. Okay.
Other than the mutual access easement definition, is there any other definitions you would like added?
Anyone? No?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item number eleven, the building month-end permits for December. Oh, how did we do? I did read that, you didn't build as many houses, Paul.
Yeah, there's...
Come on!
Brandon journalists.
I saw that!
Twice. Two different articles in thirty days, and they're... Within thirty days, the answers are not going to change.
No. I did read those. Nice work. You did well.
Well, we try to promote the positive things.
I love it.
The commercial pieces, you know? And we're still building houses. There are still people coming to Brandon.
Every once in a while.
We have a lot of developments in the works.
Yep.
Both residential, commercial, and industrial. If you look up at the industrial park, we have a lot going on. We recently made a big sale. There's a lot going on up in the industrial park. We have commercial uses, they come and go, but we are adding more than we are losing.
And we don't have a water issue.
And we don't have a water issue.
Correct.
I see QuickTrip built their, pulled their permit.
That's good. Okay.
Anybody else have anything for Paul on the building permits? Or maybe even the year-end ones? Ooh, look at those valuations. Ninety-five. What? We went from nineteen million to thirty-four million to ninety-five million in valuation? That's pretty good.
Commercial will, will drive numbers up and drive numbers down, kind of have a big of a sight, you know? Dairy Queen helps.
Yep.
Quick Star helps.
Okay, awesome. That's a, that's a lot. From thirty-four to ninety, that's, wow, okay. Nice job. Take back what I said about you not building enough houses, Paul. You're killing it. Look at you go.
You take what comes in the front door.
Almost three times the valuation, man.